We have seven, that's enough, right? No, I'm counting me. Roy, Ennio, Judith, three, four Leo, five Melinda, six with Naomi, Yamir is seven, and then eight. We have eight. Calvin, I don't see... Damali? And Todd, so there's three, we're missing those three right now. I give him, uh, I know Calvin's not making it here as work-related. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited in justice, for all. At this time, let it call roll. Naomi Zabid?
Present.
Judith Garcia? Counselor Todd Taylor?
Here.
Counselor Giovanni Recupro? Counselor Leo Robinson?
Yeah.
Counselor Calvin Brown? Counselor Damali Vido? Counselor Melinda Maldonado Vega?
Here.
Counselor Yamir Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Roya Avellaneda?
Here.
And Counselor Ennio Lopez?
Yeah.
Nine present, two absent. Seeing that we've had no emails, we're gonna move over from public speaking and on to communications. We have a communication from the city manager regarding free cash requests. Dear councils, I'm writing with a request, but the city council approved two non-COVID-19 related financial requests for free cash. Item one, consultant for quiet zone, three hundred and six thousand dollars, five hundred. I know the city council is anxious to commence the process of re-establishing a quiet zone in the city pursuant to the regulations of the Federal Railroad Administration. The recent elimination of the quiet zone was due to the fact that because of various accidents over the course of the past decade at our railroad crossings, the city's calculated quiet zone risk index is now more than twice the national significant risk threshold. In order to reduce this quiet zone risk index and restore the quiet zone, the city must install safety improvements at our railroad crossing. In order to stop this process, the city must first retain an engineer firm with the quiet zone expertise that will undertake the crucial, critical steps. This, uh, I'm gonna wave the rest of the reading, that's the summary of that request. Uh, we're now showing that Counselor Vito is present. The next free cash request is the Bunker Hill Scholarship Program for one hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and fifty. I am requesting that the city council approve one previous free cash request submitted under the cover of my March fourth, twenty twenty letter, but not yet voted. This is the request to fund the Bunker Hill Scholarship Program for Chelsea High graduates in the amount of one hundred and ninety-one dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars, sorry. Despite the pandemic, this is, this is every expectation of a Bunker Hill Community College will be accepting students for matriculation in the twenty twenty-one academic year, starting sometime in the fall. In order to ensure that Chelsea High School graduates have an opportunity to seek an associate's degree at Bunker Hill, in the fall, I ask that the city council support the funding request for this scholarship program. The remainder of the funding request in the March fourth letter can be deferred and revisited later. Do I have a motion on the communication?
Yeah, Mr. President, if we can go back and accept both communications, there'll be some coming up on the new business.
Counselor Robinson asked that we accept and file the communication, we will have something on the new business.
That'll be both communications for the record.
Counsel Robinson, which other communication you accept, are you asking to accept and file?
Actually, the quiet zone and the Bunker Hill, um, scholarship program.
Okay.
We didn't accept either one, so for the, for the record.
Okay. Well, they're together, the communication was together and the explanation was together.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a communication from Counselor Vito. Dear city council, in response to city manager Tom Emmerzino's most recent address to our residents regarding the changes to the food assistance program, I urge the city administration to reconsider the current proposal and offer a more sensible and humane plan to create a smoother transition to help our residents adjust. To add to the frenzy of our residents' lives, the decision to drastically cut down the food assistance program will jeopardize the small amount of security that our folks have relied on over the last two months. In addition, it is not feasible for most of our residents to pick up their food at Port Park and carry it back to their homes, which may be on the other side of the city. Although I recognize that the National Guard's exit puts additional pressure on Chelsea's resources, we must work together to find a better solution that doesn't leave our residents hungry. As the state and local cities prepare to open for business, we must not forget the wave of evictions and other economic pressures that will not be relieved for our most vulnerable residents anytime soon. What we need to do is support our residents and ensure that they emerge from this crisis with the support of our city government. I respectfully requesting that the city council president Avellaneda call a special meeting for the city council to coordinate a humane transition process for our most vulnerable residents. Let's get to work. Is there a motion?
Accept and file the communication under suspension, there are no objections.
Counselor Vito asked that we accept and file under suspension. There'll be an order, uh, under new business. We have a communication from the city manager. Um, this is in revised capital improvement plan FY twenty-one, FY twenty-five. Dear counselors, pursuant to my obligations of the section five-four of the Chelsea City Charter, rather, I hereby submit to you an amended capital improvement plan for fiscal years twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-five. With the severe financial constraints anticipated in FY twenty-one caused by the economic impacts of COVID-19 virus, the city simply cannot afford the level of investment proposed in the original CIP submitted at the end of January. For this reason, I have revised the CIP by reducing the number of projects in the reliance upon free cash and stabilization reserves. Is there a motion from the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension, something will be coming up on the new business.
We have coming out, moving on to unfinished business or second readings. We had an order introduced by Counselor Robinson regarding the cost items set forth in the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with SEIU Local Eight-eight-eight, memorized in the memorandum of agreement for fiscal FY twenty, twenty twenty-two, dated December twenty-fourth. Communication from the city manager on March third asks that this, uh, MOU be adopted. This was first entered in our March ninth meeting. It's coming up now for a second reading. Is there any motion? Chair recognizes Counselor Robinson.
Oh, accept and file that communication, we have something coming up on the new business.
Would you like to, uh, we're going, we're bringing up in front of us the, uh, agreement itself, it's up for a second reading.
All right, if we can take from, uh, new business, the amend, the amended order?
Okay.
And if you can, you can, if you can read the amendment?
I'll read it right now. Amended that pursuant to section four dash three, per entrance, one of the Chelsea City Charter, and with respect to the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with SEIU Local Eight-eight-eight, memorializing the memorandum of agreement of fiscal years twenty, 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 twenty-two, dated December twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen. The city council, at this time, approves only the cost items for this year of the negotiated collective bargaining agreement effective July one, twenty nineteen, and respectfully requests that the parties renegotiate, renegotiate the cost items for other years. Is there a motion on the amendment?
Yes, I would ask for a roll call on the amendment, on the amendment, and we're approaching this so that we can avoid layoffs and that the city manager will get back to the union sometime next year to further talk about the contract.
Are there any other councils that wish to speak on the matter? Seeing that, I'll now take a roll call, the motion is to adopt the amendment to the SEIE contract so that we would only adopt the first year and send this back for the city manager to negotiate a new three-year contract, given the economic circumstances, a yes vote would adopt the amendment and the contract as a whole, a no vote would bring back the original memorandum of, of, uh, agreement. The chair recognizes Counselor Recupro.
So, we voted on this contract before, right?
No.
Never voted on this one?
We did not, we did not vote on this, all we did was introduce it, the original contract was introduced and was supposed to go to a second reading.
And have a date.
And it did not go to a second reading, and since then, we've had some changes in the receipts, and the city manager has suggested, and the SEIU and city manager suggested we do just one year.
All right, so that means he wants to go back and renegotiate, that's what we're voting on, for him to go back and renegotiate with the union?
That's correct, just do a one-year deal.
One-year deal?
A one-year deal.
Do they get retroactive pay?
Yes.
So that only gives them, what, two percent increase, two points of that increase?
Two point five percent for this year.
Two point five percent?
Just one year?
This year.
So you have deferred any other years, they go back forward?
We have had discussions with SEIU about what a new contract would look like, and the discussion is that it would be the same thing that I have offered steelworkers, which is a new three-year contract, take a zero next year, three percent the, uh, year two, which would be fiscal year twenty-two, which is what is on the table now, and the raise that would have been in effect next year, two point seven five percent would be added on a new third year of FY twenty.
So in other words, that means that only one year will take it away, but then it will go back to the original agreement that you had, right? So for one year, they won't get paid, do you think the union's gonna go for that? Are they gonna have a hard time, gonna have a hard time with that?
I can't predict what will happen, the negotiations with the union leadership have been productive, that's all I can say.
So, I don't see why they won't go forward, they're not gonna lose anything, the only thing they're losing is one-year raise.
The, the commitment from the city is, if that offer is accepted, there would be a commitment of no layoffs in FY twenty-one to this group.
So we should go for that, okay, that's what, thank you.
Seeing no other discussion, I will now call a roll. Counsel Naomi Zabid?
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Todd Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Giovanni Recupro?
Yes.
Counselor Leo Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Calvin Brown is absent. Counselor Damali Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Melinda Maldonado Vega?
Yes.
Counsel Yamir Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Roya Avellaneda votes yes. Counsel Ennio Lopez? Okay. Ten in favor, none against, one absent. That motion passes. So we now approve not only the amendment, but as a whole, the new MOU for the, I mean, that was agreed upon with all the other terms. Um, we now have in front of us an order by Counsel Leo Robinson that to fund the collective bargaining agreement, which was just adopted with SEIU Eight-eight-eight for fiscal year twenty twenty, the city council authorizes the transfer of ninety-one thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars from the salary reserve account, uh, to FY twenty twenty, regular salaries account, F one oh two hundred, uh, to fund the new, the first year of contract wages, and each of the payments shall be allocated to each of the departments in the following manner, manner, rather. Auditing, three thousand sixteen, purchasing, seventeen hundred, four dollars, assessing, two thousand, six hundred and twenty-four, treasury, eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine, central billing, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars, city clerk's office, six thousand, four hundred and forty-three, planning development, two thousand, three hundred and ninety-one, police, nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight, fire, two thousand, four, four hundred and forty-seven, inspectional services, thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight, parking, nine hundred and fifty-six, DBW main building, twenty-one, forty-one, DBW building grounds, five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five, the health and human services admin, five thousand, one hundred and six, um, health and human services, elder services, two thousand, forty-five. What is the will of the council?
Ask for a roll call, vote on the adoption.
This is a second reading, this was originally, uh, introduced on March ninth. A yes vote will approve the transfer of the funds. Counsel Naomi Zabid? Counsel Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Todd Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Giovanni Recupro?
Yes.
Counsel Leo Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Calvin Brown is absent. Counsel Damali Vido?
Yes.
Counsel Melinda Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Yamir Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Roya Avellaneda, yes. Counsel Ennio Lopez?
Yes.
Ten in favor, one absent, none against. The motion passes. Next item on the agenda is an order for the council to authorize the appropriation of funds in the amount of one hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for free cash to Bunker Hill Community College Scholarship Program, express account seven four zero zero five seven eight zero eight zero to provide tuition funding for Chelsea High School graduates, is there a motion on the floor? Chair recognizes Counsel Robinson.
Roll call, vote on the adoption.
Yes, uh, the first reading of this was, uh, introduced on the ninth of March. A yes vote will approve the funding. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Counsel Naomi Zabid?
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Todd Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Giovanni Recupro?
Yes.
Counsel Leo Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Calvin Brown, absent. Counsel Damali Vido?
Yes.
Counsel Melinda Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Yamir Rodriguez? Counsel Roya Avellaneda votes yes. Counsel Ennio Lopez?
Yes.
Ten in favor, zero against, one absent. Motion passes. We have a first reading of a order that says that the sum of two thousand and sixteen, two, sorry, two hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and forty-four, representing the unexpected portion of the three hundred and forty thousand dollars appropriation from free cash under fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty nineteen. CIP for the design of Mary C. Burke Playground Improvement Project, which is no longer needed to complete that project, is hereby transferred in the amount of two hundred and sixteen dollars, two hundred and forty-four to the new building project for the Mary C. Burke Roof and Envelope Repairs. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, move to a second reading.
Move to a second reading. Okay. We have an order introduced for Counsel Robinson that the sum of three hundred and nine, nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy, representing the unexpendited portion of the one point eight million school stabilization under fiscal year twenty twenty C Capital Improvement Project for the Mary C. Burke Playground Improvement Project, which is no longer needed to complete, is hereby transferred in the amount of three hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy to the new building project, fiscal CIP, Mary C. Burke Roof and Repair, Roof and Envelope Repairs. What is the motion on the floor?
Uh, move to the second reading, if there are no objections.
We have an order introduced by Counsel Robinson that the sum of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty, representing a canceled project under fiscal twenty twenty Capital Improvement, uh, Plan for Pole Books Project, but which not, which has been canceled, is hereby transferred in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars to the C twenty twenty CIP Parking Department Vehicle Acquisition Service Fund. What is the motion on the council?
Uh, move to a second reading under suspension, if there's no objection.
Seeing none, I will move to a second reading. We have a order introduced by Counsel Robinson that the treasurer has authorized to file an application with the appropriate officials in Commonwealth of Massachusetts qualified under chapter forty-four A General Laws, any and all bonds of the city pursuant to this order and provide such information and execute such documents as such official of the Commonwealth are requiring connection therewith. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved as this loan order, unless such a premium applied to the payment of the costs or issuance of the bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this loan order in accordance to chapter forty-four, section twenty of the General Laws. Thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay for such costs by a like amount. Counsel Robinson, what is your wish?
To, uh, is that, that related to the capital improvement plan?
Yes, it does, this is the order for the bond for the, the revised capital improvement project.
Okay, accept and file a communication under suspension, it should be an order coming up on the new business?
This is the order.
Okay. All right, move it to a second reading, and we have to have a, a public hearing on the matter.
Okay. We shall have a public hearing for the revised CIP. In addition to that, we will hold a subcommittee meeting where the city manager can present the revised CIP to the city council.
Yes.
We have an order introduced by Counsel Robinson that the city council authorize the appropriation of funds in the amount of three hundred and six, five hundred dollars in free cash to FY twenty DBW Streets and Sidewalk Contract Services Account for engineering services to restore the quiet zone in Chelsea. What is the wish of the council?
Uh, actually move it to a second reading under suspension, if there's no objection.
Would like, anyone like to speak on this matter? Okay, just for those counselors who are following and those at home, this relates to the fee for the consultant for the railroad study that's going to a second reading. We have an order introduced by Counsel Avellaneda that a subcommittee on conference be held to discuss upcoming changes in the operation of the city of Chelsea pop-up food pantry. Is there a motion on the floor?
Move to adopt unanimously under suspension, if there are no objections.
Seeing no, no objections, Counsel Vito, would you like to speak on the matter?
Uh, sure, um, so essentially, there are, we're coming close to, well, not the end of the pandemic, um, but we, we have to return to some level of, some type of normalcy, and so we want to make sure that while we do that, that we're creating a nice move transit, uh, transition for our residents and our staff members, so it's just, uh, um, to make sure that we can all sit down and give our feedback as to what our opinions are, to, um, how we do, how we do that. I'm sorry, I'm a little rusty, I haven't spoken in months, thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this matter? Seeing now, that concludes most of our business, at this time, I'll ask if there's anyone who'd like to make any public announcements. Counsel Judith Garcia, you're muted, you wanna unmute, there you go.
I have, thank you, Mr. President, so one of the announcements that I would like to make on a more serious note is we know that this pandemic has affected our community in so many ways, and unfortunately, we have seen a, we have seen a high death toll, and unfortunately, many of our families who have lost loved ones do not have the necessary funds to pay for, and dignify your burial for that person. So I am excited to announce, unfortunately, it's not the best announcement in, in the sense of, of the cause of, of death, but, um, I worked very closely with members of our ci, of our city, Mimi, along with Father Edgar, on getting some initial funds to help families who cannot afford to pay for funeral service for their loved ones. So if there's a Chelsea person that you know is in need and cannot afford to pay the, um, the funeral, the funeral cost of, of their loved one, they can reach out to Father Edgar by calling six one seven eight eight four three three zero zero. Again, that number is six one seven eight eight four three three zero zero. six one seven eight eight four three three zero zero. Again, that number is six one seven eight eight four three three zero zero. We are giving a thousand seven hundred dollars per family who needs assistance with funeral costs. Um, then the main point of focus is, uh, Father Juarez, and you can call him or you can email him at vicars@lucas@AOL.com. Again, it's vicars@lucas@AOL.com. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has an announcement?
Yeah, council, council president. Um, I would like to relay to my colleagues and to the residents of this community the importance of the census. The more people that we get counted, the more money will come to the City of Chelsea. The less people that we get counted, that means the less money coming into the City of Chelsea. So while we're out moving around and talking to people, express to them the importance of filling out the census. Thank you.
At this time, I'll allow anyone who has a moment of silence, if they know anyone, that we should be, um, vying over at this time. Counselor Recupera.
Well, man, Mr. Scudo, that coach coached my kids for many years. He died. And I'm more excited for him. Was a great person in Chelsea, a great coach, coached a lot of little kids, including my own.
Anyone else?
Actually, actually the same. And Joel Scudo's son is a, uh, local policeman here for the City of Chelsea.
Counselor Vito.
Um, there's like such a long list. I just wanted to make sure that we're having a moment of silence for everybody that's been affected or that has lost their lives.
All right, with that, we'll rise and give a moment of silence. That concludes our meeting. Thank you very much, everyone, for joining.